I'm going to call this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to please give us the roll call. Madam, city clerk.
Good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Pullen-Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, madam. Next on our agenda is our ceremonial portion. We're going to ask Councilwoman Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Pastor George Magalini from Hope Chapel of Hawthorne will leave us in a word of inspiration.
Gentlemen, please remove your hats and recite along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Protem, council staff, everyone. I have scripture, prayer, and a brief poem tonight. The scripture is from Philippians, chapter four, starting with verse four. And it says, "Rejoice in the Lord always; again I will say, rejoice. Let your gentleness be evident to all; the Lord is near. Do not be anxious about anything, but in everything by prayer and supplication. With thanksgiving present your requests to God. And the peace of God that transcends all understanding will guard your heart and your mind in Christ Jesus." May your hearts and minds be guarded with his peace tonight. Let's pray. Father God, we do want to acknowledge you, and Lord, we acknowledge you as the very source of peace. And we thank you for your peace and protection and overall blessing upon this city, Lord, and upon every citizen. We thank you for children, youth, and adults, and your grace upon them, Lord God. We thank you for those that you have raised up to protect and to serve this community, ask that you would protect them as they protect us. We commit every detail of this meeting to you, Lord God, and we depend on your wisdom to be dispensed upon your servants, that they make decisions that are honorable to you, glorify you, and are based on your word, the holy scriptures. I pray this in Jesus' name, amen. This is called a "Christ-filled Christmas." In this world so aimless and frantic, where many live their lives filled with panic, may you enjoy the peace of Christ so holy and true, a peace that begins each day afresh and anew, with a hope so real, so lasting and bright, that restores our soul to the highest height. Jesus our Lord, our blessed Savior, the angels sang of his abundant favor to all mankind, both young and old, the plan of salvation began to unfold. Accept him as Lord, oh, accept him as king, and for all of eternity you'll have a reason to sing. So give all praise to Jesus, to God's only Son, and a merry, Christ-filled Christmas to everyone. Thanks. God bless.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Magalini. Thank you for those words of inspiration, and thank you for coming fully loaded tonight with the poem. We really appreciate that. God bless you, and have a happy holiday season. Okay, well, tonight we have a presentation. I have a presentation for you from Republic Services. Dawn Harris-Benton is going to give us a presentation on organic recycling program, our good friend from Republic Services. How are you tonight, ma'am?
Thank you. I'm doing very well.
Excellent.
And good evening, mayor, and council, and staff. Again, my name is Dawn Harris-Benton, and I'm here from Republic Services, your waste and recycling holler. And I just wanted to share some information that you should know regarding Senate Bill 1383 that will become effective on January 1st. And just to put it simply, SB 1383 is a requirement, a state requirement, that is put into place to make sure that food and green materials don't make it to the landfill. Okay? And beginning on January 1st, Longdale residents will be using their green cart to put in their food scraps and organic waste like yard trimmings, food-soiled paper, greasy pizza boxes, things like that. Okay? The information that we are sharing with residents and that we want you to know, again, starting on the 1st of January, that these are the kind of items that will go inside the green cart. The way to save on extra aromas would be to put the food waste or the organics inside of a brown paper bag, and then put it inside the green container. Okay? The blue cart is going to still be used for the same recycled products. So when you put that out at the curb, you want to make sure that you continue to use it for the regular things: plastic, cans and bottles, the water bottles, plastic water bottles, flattened cardboard, and junk mail. And then we also want to make sure that we are not confused by recycling. We want to make sure that you do not put your food waste into the blue container. Food waste and organic waste goes into the green. Okay? Something else we want to make sure in the recycled container, please don't put clothes or household hazardous waste, things like that. So we've got all those things taken care of in the green container and the blue container. So what's left for the trash cart? Shouldn't be very much, right? So same things, things that you don't want to mention, but diapers and pet waste and bathroom waste and those kind of things, still belong in the trash container. Just want to make sure that everybody has the information. Those things go into the black container. SB 1383 will also have an impact on local businesses and apartment complexes. And that means that these customers that own businesses here or that have apartment complexes, those also are going to be required to recycle their organic waste. Again, the organic waste, things like meat and bones, you've got fruit and vegetables, milk and milk products, things like that. Also, if you have like grass or cuttings or leaves or those kind of things, those need to be recycled as well. So we have containers for the multifamily apartment complexes and for businesses at no additional charge, and you just need to call our number, 800-299-4898, and we'll make arrangements to get that container out to you. So how are we going to get the containers out to everyone? Well, for the multifamily businesses, I mean, multifamily apartment complexes and the businesses, we divided your city into quadrants or zones. And we will begin delivering containers to those that have not already signed up. So we've got a recycle coordinator that has been out to just about all of the businesses in the city. And some businesses need more encouragement than others, as do some multifamily locations need a little bit more encouragement. And now that it is the law, and it will be effective on January 1st, we will definitely be in close contact with them. And we will let these businesses know that we will be delivering containers to them, and we will also let them know how to use them. We don't want them to just show up one day and say, hey, what's this container doing here? We won't do it without getting in touch with them first. And so we broke your city up into zones, and we will deliver approximately 200 containers per week in your zone. So we will start delivering containers on January 10th through the 14th. We'll be in Zone 1. And the 17th through the 21st will be in Zone 2. Zone 3 will be the 24th through the 28th. And then Zone 4, down in the bottom right quadrant, we will deliver January 31st through February 4th. And these are for the customers that have not already signed up or have not already begun participating. Okay? So just wanted to quickly remind everyone that on the 1st of January, when you're at home putting out your containers, make sure that you use your green container for organic materials. And I just have a couple of little pictures of what those look like so you can recognize, you know, put your bones and your pizza boxes and your poinsettias that didn't make it. All of those things will go into your green container. Okay? If you have questions, you can reach out to me at my email address there. It's dharris@republicservices.com. There is a Republic Services general website to take a look at for additional questions. And also, you can call our customer service line, 800-299-4898. Okay?
Okay. Are there any questions?
Is there an additional fee for the containers for businesses and multi-unit properties?
There is no additional fee.
So if the, I mean, I guess it's self-explanatory. The food containers, that's so, if they're not, let's say if they're fresh or whatever, you put those in just to regularly cycle?
Well, you can, you, yes, yes. There would be like boxes and stuff like that. The difference is if it's got food-soaked stuff, food-soaked paper and napkins.
Okay, so if it's a pizza box and you got the pizza oil and cheese and stuff, you know, you put it in there, but you gotta have another box.
You have to eat the extra cheese off, and then...
You have a shoebox. Does shoebox go into the?
Recycle container.
Recycled, okay.
So any styrofoam goes in the green?
Styrofoam does not. Styrofoam is not recyclable.
Because most of the to-go containers are coming in styrofoam. So what do we do with that?
That will go in the trash.
Just regular trash?
Correct.
I have a question, Dawn.
Yes.
Are you going to furnish the brown paper bags, because most stores have plastic?
That's a very good question, and that's doubtful, because we don't have any either.
Okay. And then, my understanding from years past, that the plastic grocery bags go on the recycle because they're recyclable. Now you're saying we turn them to the stores. What happens if the store doesn't have a recycle policy? What do you do with those bags? Just store them in your garage? Or deliver them to your house, or Republic, or what?
Yeah, bring them on over to my house.
Okay.
No, you know, it can be a little bit complicated, but if you have enough of them and they're all in together to make one big ball, they can be recycled. But if they're in there loose, they clog up the machinery that does the recycling, so that's a challenge.
So as long as they're the size of a beach ball, volleyball, basketball, it's okay then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Good.
Okay, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, let's hear our public safety report. Let's hear from our sheriff department. It's Lieutenant Leo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for November 15th through December 5th. On November 19th, at about 1:00 PM, Sergeant Healy was conducting traffic enforcement in the area of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne Boulevard when he conducted a traffic stop of a truck for tinted windows. The return on the vehicle showed that it was a felony vehicle wanted by Torrance Police Department for grand theft. Torrance Police arrived and arrested the driver and impounded the vehicle for evidence, which also contained numerous stolen items. The suspect was wanted for stealing numerous items from a home improvement center. On November 29th, at about 6:00 AM, Deputy Pacheco conducted a patrol check of the Travelers Inn and saw a car parked in the handicapped spot with a female hunched over. Seeing that she may be distressed, Deputy Pacheco checked on her welfare. Her male companion approached, and he admitted to possessing methamphetamine. Deputy Pacheco searched the vehicle for additional narcotics and found more methamphetamine and two firearms within. Both suspects were arrested for carrying a loaded firearm in a vehicle in a public place. And the male suspect was additionally charged with possession of a controlled substance while armed, and both were booked at South Los Angeles Station. On December 1st, at about 9:00 PM, deputies responded to a vandalism call for service where the suspects vandalized a wall with Longdale 13 gang graffiti on the 4100 block of Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Deputies located and contacted the suspects who were parked near the graffiti. The deputies were able to locate spray cans involved in the crime. The deputies arrested four suspects who were affiliated with the Longdale 13 Street Gang for vandalism, booked them at South Los Angeles Station. On December 2nd, South Los Angeles detectives conducted a search warrant on several locations in response to Longdale gang graffiti that yielded workable information to conduct the warrant. On December 3rd, in the late evening to early morning hours, several deputies and patrol cars were deployed in the city for driving under the influence saturation patrol. Purpose for the additional patrols were to identify drunk drivers and arrest them before they become involved in a traffic collision with other motorists and pedestrians. The deputies were deployed during the time when drunk drivers are more prevalent. Fortunately, no drunk drivers were located during their tour in the city, and out of the 11 motorists who were believed to be under the influence, nine were cited for other vehicle code violations. One driver was arrested for driving with a suspended driver's license and his vehicle impounded. This concludes my report. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions?
Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Cuevas?
What happens to those, the graffiti group that was picked up? Do they go in for 24 hours and then get released? Or do they stay?
They stayed for, for that particular case, they stayed for 24 hours.
And then they go back and decide to graffiti again because?
Yeah, we...
We can't do anything about it, basically.
It's, unfortunately, we're, we have those COVID release rules, and they end up being, unless there's a violent, you know, crime, then we usually hold them a little longer, but in this case, it's...
So we're still under the COVID rules?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now let's hear from our fire department, our fire station. Yes, sir. How are you?
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Chief Brian King with the Los Angeles County Fire Department with your public safety report for the month of November. We experienced 241 responses. Twelve of those were miscellaneous in nature, didn't fall any particular category. Three of those were fire in nature with zero losses. 173 EMS calls or medical calls. Forty-three of those required advanced life-saving interventions, with 100 with basic life-saving interventions, and 23 that ended up signing AMA or deciding to stay at their homes and residence following our treatment. And then seven with just no transport at all. And that concludes the report for November, unless there's any additional questions.
Are there any questions on the lieutenant's report? Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're now are on oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body, we ask that you sign up, that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you just approach the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, sir.
Gary Adams. I'd like to speak to the council about the progress that's been made on the parking situation on Manziel that was previously brought before the council. It is my understanding that considerable progress has been made. The original restriction was at the request of Anthony's Concrete. Anthony's Concrete has been confirmed to be out of business. Therefore, there is no further need for that restriction at all. However, I've been led to believe that this, there may be a requirement for a traffic study. If that is the case, I request that that be done as soon as humanly possible. Hopefully, we can have the citizens' parking spaces back for the Christmas holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello. I'm Louis Lee, and I'm with Eubanks Conservatory of Music and Arts, Inc. And we gave our vision plan to Matthew here, and we would like to partner with the city of Longdale. We know you have awesome media, television department. We explained what we're endeavoring in our vision plan, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you.
Okay, what was your name again?
Louis Lee.
Louis Lee.
Yes, sir.
Did you say from Eubanks?
Eubanks Conservatory of Music and Arts, Inc.
Okay, got it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor, and Pullman Miles, and council members. My name is Jim Holland, and I'm your One Legacy City Ambassador. I volunteer my time to advocating and educating on the importance of organi and tissue donation. I myself received a liver transplant in 2011. It was a life-saving gift from a stranger that made my life what it is today. My wife's brother also passed away in 2016. He was also a registered organ donor, and he was able to save two lives with being able to donate his kidneys. I'm here tonight to invite you to the, excuse me, One Legacy exclusive first look at the 2022 Donate Life Rose Parade float. It's on this Friday, December 10th, 2021, in Irwindale, California. The event starts at 9:00 AM with check-in. There's photo opportunity, and also breakfast will be served. The program begins at 10:00 AM until noon. The 2022 Rose Parade will feature elements that were planned for the 2021 parade, including the theme "Dream, Believe, and Achieve." The 2022 parade theme will extend beyond the initial focus on education and will include a celebration of perseverance and strength, science and scientists, health professionals, first responders, and essential workers. The 2022 Donate Life float, Courage to Hope, will feature the majestic winged lion of Venice from Italy's Piazza San Marco or St. Mark's Square. Organi and tissue donation offers hope to donors' families who, in the midst of losing a loved one, see the chance to believe their loved one's gift will help save lives. At the same time, those waiting to receive a life-saving organ have the dream and courage to hope that a donor will become available to restore their health and change their lives, as my life was changed by my donor. They can now achieve their life goals, all thanks to the donor. If you would like a more hands-on experience, we would kindly invite you to join us as a volunteer to do a special float decoration shift reserved for city council leaders on December 12th at 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. I'd also like to note that both events require that attendees show proof of complete COVID-19 vaccination or a negative viral test result from a sample taken within 72 hours to enter. We hope to see you on December 10th.
Time is expired, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Randall Abram, Longdale resident. The last city council's meeting with the appointment of an acting city manager could return Longdale to a management style that does not micromanage its directors. The steps the city council will take tonight should stop the exodus of employees from the city of Longdale. With new management, the director of municipal services might be able to return to a more stringent enforcement of any potential violations. The policy had been changed so that a resident reporting a violation had to know all the violations on property that had been reported. The code enforcement officers were only allowed to act on a specific violation and had to put on blinders to other violations that were in plain sight. Hopefully, now code enforcement officers can return once again to act on all violations encountered when the site is visited. The residential property inspection, the residential property report should once again follow the dictates of the municipal code, allowing for inspection of not only the garage, but the exterior areas of the unit for sale. In a residential property report a few years ago, the inspection of the exterior discovered an illegal deck conversion to a bedroom. The discovery of this before escrow closed allowed the buyer to renegotiate the sale as the new buyer had the duty to resolve the violation after the sale closed. Had this not come up as a result of the residential property inspection, the new owner would have paid all costs to return the deck to its original state completely out of pocket. The council tonight will decide on either appointing an interim city manager or the appointment of a city manager. The ideal candidate for city manager is someone who is familiar with the workings of the city of Longdale and whose management style provides oversight to Longdale's directors, but does not micromanage them. The holiday season is upon us, which often presents with an uptake in illegal fireworks. New Year's Eve can be particularly problematic with loud mortars being blasted late in the night. Perhaps the penalties for fireworks can once again be highlighted on the city's website and various forms of social media. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, hot. Good evening, Mayor Robert Pullen-Miles, member of the city council and city staff. My name is Griselda Sanchez, and I'm the community outreach coordinator at Famous Citizens Corporations. I want to take much more of your time tonight. If you allow me, I just wanted to share some resources. This is the last council meeting that we are attending since our services is coming to an end on December 2021, the end of the month. We have been working in the city of Longdale since January 2019. We have conducted assessments, public opinion polls, presentations, meetings, and attended events educating all residents on how tobacco smoke exposure affects people's health. We have encountered people with unfortunate stories on their experiences with tobacco, people who support the work we do, and people who doesn't support it. But we have also spoken with tobacco users that we have been able to help and link them to cessation services so they can quit. Our time working with the Longdale community has been very valuable. Unfortunately, as many services, ours has come to an end. However, the LA County Department of Public Health Tobacco Control Prevention Unit will be available to assist you if you have any questions or requests assistance on this topic. We are sharing with you a list of organizations that are ready to assist as well as resources available for you and the community. We've also added the contact information of the Public Health Law Center. They can provide you with free technical assistance on the drafting of a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. They have experts waiting to assist you if you need their help. Also, please remember that tobacco smoke continues to be a problem in multi-unit housing even during a global pandemic. As we stated several times before, secondhand smoke is a major issue in apartment buildings, and in Longdale, 50% of people surveyed have stated that they have been exposed to secondhand smoke where they live. That is why many municipalities as well institutions like Housing Authorities HUD, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the CDC, Center for Disease Control, have enacted policies and issued statements that all multi-unit housing should be smoke-free. In Longdale, you have the authority to prevent the exposure to tobacco smoke for all your residents living in multi-unit housing.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Come on, come on. You guys can go to the side so this gentleman can approach the podium.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. As many of you might know or see my face or heard my voice, I'm an intern with Famous Citizens Corporations. So our program is coming to an end, and here are some things that we have accomplished and wish to mention. Since 2019, we have been able to attend over 20 community events, provided more than 30 educational presentations, hosted over 40 community meetings, formed partnerships with different organizations, worked very closely with the Longdale Elementary School District and Centinela Valley Union High School District. We also attended several council meetings. We met with two council members from... We met with two council members so far. We have offered information and assistance with anything related to the topic of tobacco smoke drifting into multi-unit housing. We helped organize and mobilize a community group known as Longdale for Smoke-Free Living Coalition. Longdale for Smoke-Free Living Coalition was formed in response to the exposure to secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing from Longdale residents who expressed a concern and wanted to see a solution. We recommend reaching out to Longdale residents who have contacted each of you via email and other outlets. Lastly, we want to thank those of you who willingly took the initiative to meet with us and hear the information we have to share. We hope that we have been of value to you. And to this body, thank you for allowing us this time to speak. We hope that the city of Longdale can find a solution to aid residents by looking into what other committees have done to deal with this issue of secondhand smoke drifting into multi-unit housing. In the meantime, we hope to come back soon and work with you all again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you give us your name again?
No.
You're, no, okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me okay without the mask? Or would you like me to take it off? Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Phil Councilman. My name is Nancy Wilcox and I'm the co-chair for the South Bay Coalition to End Homelessness. I'm here this evening to invite you to participate in the homeless count that's going to be taking place on January 26th, so Wednesday evening. Of course, we didn't hold it this past year because of COVID, but it's, we're in full gear and it's scheduled to be next month. And I really want to thank this council and the city for hosting it since 2018. We've had it, as many of you know, we've had it across the street at the Heraldia Hoffman Community Center. It's a wonderful venue and we're hoping to be able to use that again. I know you're still looking at some COVID restrictions, so we're hoping by then, again, the facility will be available for us to use. The Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, who administers the homeless count, they have put in many provisions to make sure that it is COVID-safe. And that's actually in some of the handouts. And I'll just talk about one of them in particular. We are asking our volunteers to sign up as teams on the registration site. So that way, when they're in a car, they can say exactly who the people are that are their car mates and, because what they're going to be doing is getting a census tract and then checking every single street on that track. So that's one of the main procedures that we did change this year. In order to cover all of the streets in Longdale, you have six census tracts. So ideally, we're going to get, we'd like to have about maybe 18 to 20 folks volunteer that night. So we have good teams of three, possibly four people per car. People can sign up at the website, theycountwillyou.org. And again, that information's on the handout. There's also a flyer, which I made available to Diane Parsley. I think many of you know that she has also been running your site since 2018. And I wanted to give a shout out to her. She does a really terrific job. She has a very warm and friendly manner that's very welcoming. But I tell you, she's really organized. She's really thorough. She's the one who always asks me all the questions, so she's well-prepared. She does a really terrific job. And I know she's going to be heading up the count again next year. So again, in closing, I just wanted to thank you for your partnership all of these years and just to stress how important it is to really get folks to come out for the homeless count. People who live in Longdale, you know your community better than, I live in Torrance. I can always come and help with the count as well. But you know your community, you know where the folks are who are experiencing homelessness. So you're going to know exactly where to look. Where someone like me, I'm just going to be driving around, kind of looking around. So that's why it's really important and we really encourage the members here to participate. It starts at 8:00, you'll be home by 10:00. It's going to be a little bit shorter this year just because of the procedures we have in place. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close public comments. We bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council. Let's hear from the councilwoman.
Did you forget my name? I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that came and spoke. I won't take up too much time. I did have a question, however, possibly our lieutenant can answer. Because I am curious, there was a comment made regarding how our enforcement is going to look like for New Year's. And I'm anticipating it's going to be a little more celebrated this year just because people feel more comfortable and the vaccines are out. And I've been seeing events being advertised for going out. So I just was wondering if we had, kind of what the Sheriff's Department was planning to do for New Year's Eve night and kind of regulating it. Are we having more patrols or kind of just an overview of how that looks like?
Lieutenant, can you come down to the, come down to the mic for me?
Yes, we have to discuss that with Mike Reyes, what procedural implement that night. We didn't have an issue in prior years, but I'm sure we're anticipating a greater increase of celebration this year. So I'll see what we can do to accommodate and combat that.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And then just a few other things. I am trying to make the One Legacy Rose Parade float. So I am trying to make that this week. Sorry, I am done. Thank you. And then, and I do always participate in the homeless count every year. And yes, thanks to Diane, she was instrumental in bringing a counting site to the city of Longdale. So I look forward to participating in that again this year or next year. And that I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Quavis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. I am already signed up for the float. I can't make the 10th, but I could do the 12th. And so you'll have two people, my husband also, will be attending. For, let's see here. Nancy, I think, oh, there you are. I will be signing up to do the count. I just haven't had time, but I'll reach out to Diane because she handles my appointments. And then as far as the parking on progress, if we need to have a study, could we get bids so that we could decide who to go with for the traffic study?
I don't know if you need a bid. Is that that much, that big of area, Billy?
Well, first, yeah, we probably won't need a study, but the department is well-suited to figure out if we need a study or not, or how we should handle that.
Could we see if we could do it? If not, by the end of this year, by the end of January? And see if we could get that going?
Sure. Mr. Adams was correct that the parking restriction was something that was in place based on another business that's no longer available or no longer in business. We did have discussions internally and there was discussions about there is a need for a traffic study to be completed. And Mr. Julian Lee can take the lead on that and we'll be able to move forward with that.
Thank you. And then, let's see, what else? I want to thank the smoke-free people who are, who left already for teaching our citizens about smoking and the dangers of smoke in units. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
I'd like to start by saying thank you to everyone that did come up to speak with us tonight. Gary, I'm with you. I want those parking places back as soon as possible. And if we can get them back by the holidays, that would sure be appreciated. That's for spaces my street would love to have for spaces. So if we could move on that, I'd like to see us get that done as soon as possible. Jim, thank you for presenting again on One Legacy. I so appreciate One Legacy. For many years, I worked at Little Company and Mary in the emergency room. And the fine work that you do and the compassion that is shown with every case is outstanding. Unfortunately, this year, I can't attend, but I look forward in the future to be able to attend and go down. I also have friends that are actually, have been in the past, represented on the float. So it holds a pretty special place in my heart. Randall, thank you for bringing up the firework issue on New Year's. If we can relet, get something on our website as quickly as possible. And I would like to keep informed as to the meeting that the lieutenant and Mr. Reyes are going to have and what the plan of action is, because I think that really needs to be shared as soon as possible. And if we are going to have extra patrol out and if it is going to be city patrol or if it's going to be sheriff's patrol, but what our action is, I'd like to know. And Nancy, the homeless count, every year, it's absolutely amazing to me. As I drive the streets of Longdale, our homeless is changing. It used to be where I could drive down the street and recognize the same faces on every corner. And I think every time, every day I drive down the boulevard, I am seeing new faces and it saddens me. So I appreciate the work that you're doing with that organization. And I'm going to take a look at my calendar and see if I can also join in. Thank you.
Mr. Protem.
Thank you, Robert. I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. Randall, you have competition out there. Those two ladies spoke faster than you did. I got the first part and at the end. But okay, aside, Randall, I want to see that the code enforcement and double parking is reinstated. It should have been already. The former city manager is no longer here. He's the one that stopped that. So maybe we can find out if we can reinstate that. Because, you know, we can't turn a blind eye on the illegal buildings or electrical. And people are double parking left and right. And you ask them what emergency is with the flashes on. They have no emergency. They're waiting for a wife or they're waiting for the wife to be in the car so they can move in the parking space. So we have to curb that now. I'm getting, I turned into Michael Reyes, a lot of these businesses that come by, insurance companies, most of them are insurance companies, that put stuff on the cars. I hope, I turned in two of them by today and I want them cited. One is repeat offender. And I think, I believe it, each time you're cited, the fees go up higher. Okay. And Nancy, I will be there with my colleagues. I'll volunteer, Rondo, right now. You know, this is what I do. Rondo will be there. And I'll be there.
I appreciate you volunteering.
And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Robert.
Thank you, sir. Let's see here. First of all, I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke, those who spoke and shared their concerns. We really appreciate your input. Mr. Jim Holland, I want to thank you once again for coming every year to let us know about One Legacy and the importance of organ donations. And we really appreciate that. And we also appreciate your involvement with the Rose Parade, the parade. I did have a chance, I guess it was, wasn't it last year? It was right before the pandemic. It was, well, it was before the pandemic, to go out to see the float. And that was really a unique experience to see them doing all the flowers and stuff like that and putting up the floats together. So that was a really extraordinary event and I want to thank you for inviting us. I'm going to do my best to see if I can make one of those. But I appreciate the invitation and for both invitations. Moving on to Randall, thank you for bringing up the fireworks, of course. Because sometimes, you know, the New Year's kind of slipped by us and we forget that that's a festive time of the year for some in terms of fireworks or what have you. So we'll be curious to see what the, how we're going to monitor the firework activities here in the city. So thank you for bringing, bringing that up. Speaking of double parking, double parking drives me crazy. People, double parking, unless it's where you have these, what do you call these, delivery companies? They got a fancy, they got, yeah, Uber Eats, but they got a fancy name for all those companies. I can see in that instance, because they're there for like maybe a split second or what have you, when they run in, run out, or somebody runs out and grab it, grabs and go. But when you have people really kind of using double parking as a way of parking, I think that makes the parking situation in Longdale even worse situation where you have people shuffling cars around, going around cars because they're double parked or what have you. And we really have to make sure we get a handle on that. I've seen an increase that, I don't know if people have more cars these days than they did last year, but I've seen an increase, people double parking. And I'm not talking about just kind of blocking the driver a little bit. I'm talking about blocking the driveway completely. And oftentimes, it's not even their driveway. It's someone else's driveway. It's a neighbor's driveway or someone, you know, that they don't live on that block. Maybe they're visiting or something. I don't, I don't know. But I think that's something we need to take a look at. One reason why we, at one point, said that we were not going to allow double parking is because of the safety concerns with particularly fire in emergency medical. And that was one of the reasons why we, one of the reasons why we don't allow double parking, because that came before the council, this was a few years ago, where we had made that decision not to allow double parking. And that was one of the reasons why in the fire department are waiting on it. And we concluded that it would be more of a detriment to allow people to double park in the event that there's an emergency. Because as you know here in Longdale, most of our lots are two or greater. We even have some zones that are one, but you can guarantee they have two on a lot. And so when there's an emergency, it makes it kind of challenging for the emergency responders to service their calls. And so I want to thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Randall. The smoke-free organization, I appreciate the work that they've done in the community to apprise people of secondhand smoke in multifamily dwellings and to get the message out about the harmful effect of secondhand smoke. So I appreciate the work that they have done in the community. Of course, we talked about Manseal already on the parking. Totally on board with freeing up that parking as soon as possible. The homeless count, seemed like I've been volunteering for the homeless count. And so I'll make a note of it on my calendar. Thank you, Ms. Nancy, for bringing that to our attention. And we thank you for bringing, for coordinating this program on behalf of Zalasa, right? On behalf of Zalasa. And of course, Diane, as you spoke about it already, does a fabulous job with coordinating the homeless count. So we appreciate all her hard work in coordinating this account every year. Every year, I do have the honor of participating in the homeless count. So unless I have to work in something to that degree, I will be joining. And thank you. Right, right. With that, before I'm voluntold, I'm going to move the agenda. But thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to close public comments and council comments. And next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, which is item G. What is the pleasure of the consent calendar?
Robert, I have one question on number two.
Question on number two? Yes, sir.
Who's handling this? Oh, Jared. Oh, Jared, okay. On the staff report on the back page, it's fiscal impact. It says that we already spent $570,775 of the $808,920 to finish a project that's going to be $106,736. So we're going to have a refund, a plus of cash back or?
Well, depending on what it takes, since we kind of got backed up by, first of all, good evening, council. But we kind of got behind because of COVID-19. So that's the reason why we have those fees so far. But most of it had gone to the housing element. And we do expect to use all of the funds to finish the general plan.
Because what, little, seven, six, eighty-six. About $60,000 left over. So that's, you're going to use it all?
We do expect to use it all, yes.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, if there are not any further questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Because the motion's been made by as far as that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Quavis. Are there any discussion on the motion? Seeing now with the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
Seeing now with the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, continuance of a public hearings for an appeal request, appeals of the planning commission. Let's hear from, yes, sir, this is city attorney.
Thank you, sir. I won't make the acting city manager weigh in. I can probably just give you what you need tonight. The staff is asking simply that you continue this matter to your meeting of January 18th. As you know, it was the, the current city manager's desire to do an economic impact report, to really understand the impacts of this project on the immediate area at Hawthorne Boulevard. That study has been requested, a consultant is currently working on it, and it should be completed by the end of the calendar year. In light of that, we believe that at your meeting of January 18th, 2022, we can give you all of the information that you need to make a final determination that night, and so we are asking for that continuance. If any member of the public is here tonight who would like to speak on the matter, it's the council's prerogative to let them speak or to ask them to wait until January 18th. But I will say that in my years of working on planning projects, it always seems to me that the council better hears the public when you're hearing them on the night that you're actually making the decision. So I would encourage any member of the public here to speak on this item to wait, wait till the 18th. But if you can't, then certainly it's the mayor's prerogative to let you speak this evening. That ends my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the five of you have.
Thank you for that report. Yeah, I do agree, if we can, unless someone, for some reason, is not able to speak during the public hearing, you won't, you seem like you're here at every meeting.
Not sure.
You're not sure? Okay. I prefer if, that way we have a holistic, but if you're not sure, you can speak on it tonight. Okay, let's, let's do that. So let me do this, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, it seems like there may be one other person that might want to speak, I think this is all this young lady's hand? Okay. So what I'll do, I'll open up the public hearing for, the two individuals can make some public comments, and then we'll close it, and that way, if you don't make it, you're on the record. Sounds good? Okay, it is now, let's see if we have any questions, before we open a public hearing. Did you have a question?
I was to make sure they, I'll talk, I'll say it's a city attorney.
Okay. Okay, it's 7:23, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. The public hearing is hereby open. Yes, sir.
Gary Adams again. I previously stated my objections to this car wash. Upon further review this very last weekend, this new proposed car wash is two blocks from the car wash that was recently approved for expansion. We don't need this thing. Number one, number, well, actually, whatever number you want to give it. It is not the highest and best use for this property. And anybody that knows Longdale knows that it is not the highest and best use of the property. One other major objection that I have is that was requested that the environmental assessment requirements be waived. Please note that one of the properties had Vic's television on it. If you know anything about televisions, they have asbestos and other hazardous materials in them. I am confident that a proper evaluation of the soil underlying that building will prove that there are carcinogens there which are hazardous to the public's health. Thank you.
Let's give, give us your name, just state your name just for the record since this is a public hearing.
Gary Adams.
Gary Adams, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yes, ma'am. Do me a favor, why don't you start by stating your name for me and your affiliation?
Absolutely. Nicole Kuklock-Waldman, K-U-K-L-O-K dash Waldman, W-A-L-D-M-A-N. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I just wanted to let you know that we, we appreciate the city attorney's continued consideration in accommodating everything that's needed to happen, including the provision of the economic study, which is being prepared by Larry Cosmont. And we'd also like to ask that the city attorney prepare draft development agreement to reflect the findings of that, that study, so that we can move forward in an efficient and effective way that is a win for both Longdale and my client. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I look forward to seeing you on the 18th. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Okay, any others wishing to provide any comments in this matter? Seeing now, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 7:26, and we're gonna continue the public hearing for, what date was that again, this city attorney?
January 15.
Fifteen, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Okay, January 18th. We'll continue the, the public hearing for January 18th.
Tuesday, January 18th, because of the national holiday of the year.
Oh, right, okay. So Tuesday, January 18th, we'll continue this public hearing. Okay, with that, the public hearing is closed, and we're now on item number seven on administration, annual reorganization of the city council. Basically, this is when, where it says it right here, when we designate a pro temp to serve from January 2022 to December 31, 2022, rest of the year.
Mr. Mayor, I have to make a motion that Councilwoman Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman become mayor pro temp as of January 1st, 2022?
Okay, the motion was made that we, that we rotate Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman as the mayor for, mayor pro temp for January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
I'll second that.
And it's been seconded by Quavis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Is that ready? Would the council please vote?
Motion for reorganization passes with Councilmember Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman abstaining.
Okay.
You didn't ask if she accepted.
Very good. Congratulations, that will start at our January meeting.
Are you supposed to ask if she is acceptable position?
Well, she should have gone ahead, no. Right?
This is a hard question.
Right.
The young lady to my left, she was saying that.
Yeah, shouldn't she accept it?
Very good. I think she did. Okay, next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. Madam active city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I just wanted to follow up on an item that came up during the last council meeting regarding the reopening of the community center. Staff has taken a look at some of the things that are needed to actually facilitate this reopening, which would need a comprehensive plan. There are some items that actually really need some attention, like the HVAC system. We actually need to develop a COVID-19 plan that is in compliance with the county of Los Angeles. So our goal is to take a look at what is actually needed for this reopening and bring a comprehensive report back to you in January. At this point, I want to turn it over to Mr. Greg Murphy, our city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, I need to make, at this point, a, a public reading of a joint statement dated November 30th of this year, and the joint statement reads as follows. The city of Longdale announced today that its city manager, Kevin Chun, is leaving his position effective December 31st, 2021. In his capacity as city manager, Mr. Chun helped guide the city through the global pandemic, transitioning online access to key city services, and helping to maintain public safety. Mr. Chun maintained the city's finances and reserves in a healthy condition while completing several infrastructure-related projects, which will bring long-term and sustainable benefits to the city of Longdale. The city council thanks Kevin for his dedication and commitment to good government and service to the Longdale community. He helped navigate our city through the worst of the pandemic and brought forward progressive ideas that will benefit the city for many years, said Mayor Robert Pullen Miles. The council wishes Kevin well in his future career endeavors. Mr. Chun and the city will work together in the coming weeks to effect a smooth transition while the city council considers its options for filling the vacant city manager position. It was an honor to work with the city council and community to tackle many challenges that we faced through the outbreak of the pandemic and other community challenges. I appreciated the opportunity to serve the Longdale community and wish the city ongoing success, noted Mr. Chun. We will move swiftly to recruit our next city manager to ensure high-level public service is sustained for our residents and businesses, said Mayor Pullen Miles. That is the end of the joint statement, and that is the final report, sir, out of closed session essentially, on the city council's actions with respect to Mr. Chun. Thank you all very much, and thank you to the public for listening.
Thank you for reading that statement. Okay, next thing on our item, next item, I'm kind of tired of this. Okay, items from the mayor's, council members, let's hear council member, that's where.
So I did have three events that I can remember that I've attended. I attended on November 18th, the South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors meeting. We did have a speaker, Lindsay Lstra, from the Senior Public Health Analyst, or she is the Senior Public Health Analyst for SPOT 8, which the city of Longdale is in, update regarding vaccination. They are doing outreach in our, in our city. There are some county workers who are knocking on doors, trying to educate the public about vaccinations, in effort to get the vaccine rate up. I do have some more information, I will forward it over to staff, that way they can post it, and, and that, they will be giving us indications of what areas they'll be in, and the progress that's been made so far with regards to that. I also attended the South Bay Cities Council of Government Legislative Committee. The legislative committee is currently looking at possibly starting a South Bay Housing Trust Fund, in an effort to increase housing and also help cities reach their arena numbers. It's very, in the very early stages, so we're just hearing speakers from other trust funds and, and how they've gone about their efforts. More to be, there's more, a lot more to be investigated and looked into prior to starting, undertaking something as big as that. And then I did attend the Angel Tree lighting. I just want to say thank you to staff, thank you, Mike. There were some great vendors there, particularly, I liked the activities that were going on. We had balloon, face painting, a little train, ice skating. It was, it was very nice to end the holiday seasons with that event, and, you know, after the hard couple of years we've had, so I really enjoyed it, and want to say thank you to everybody, thank you to everybody that attended as well. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Quavis?
I attended a via Zoom, the Longdale Smoke-Free Living Photo Voice Exhibit. It was their last meeting that they had. It, it seems like their research was mostly done in a different city, not so many surveys done here in Longdale, but I would like to see if we could continue to teach our, everybody about the, about smoking. Also, I did a virtual meeting with the general plan in Hawthorne Boulevard, specific plan. Only three citizens were online or on the phone, and I want to thank Jared and Adrian for conducting that meeting, and for your patience, because not everybody's logging in nowadays. I want to see if we could conduct a, not a virtual one, but an in-person meeting, maybe we'll have more people attend those. But I have a feeling we're ready to approve something. Is that correct? I think so.
Good evening, council members. So yes, we are going to planning commission on January, I'm sorry, December 8th, so this Wednesday, we're gonna take the housing element for recommendation to the city council to take action, and we're hoping to bring it to you guys on January 18th, which is the next city council meeting, and we are gonna have a virtual meeting on December 15th, and we're hoping to be able to do something in person. But right now, since we're short-staffed, I'm kind of talking to Adrian and myself only, and see if we can maybe do something like an open house or something for, for the citizens to come over, and maybe just take a look at some of the stuff that we've been doing with the general plan. Since we are gonna continue with the general plan, we are gonna keep having meetings and letting everybody know that we're still working on the rest of the elements. Thank you.
I also did a virtual meeting, State of Homeless Panel Series, Permanent Affordable Housing. Apparently, the rents have increased over 50%, where wages stays in the teens, so that is one of the main reasons why we're seeing a little bit more of the homeless. So we, as a society, we need to figure out how to bring up those wages and, and help the, the homeless that are out there right now. I did attend a virtual South Coast AQMD 32nd Annual Clean Air Awards, where Arnold Schwarzenegger was awarded, and Volvo was received an award. I attended the Longdale Tree Lighting, and I want to thank Mike and Julian for putting that together, and staff. Staff did a great job on that day. And I have a question for Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. The slay date for the council is?
Is?
Is it?
December 14th.
And we meet at the city yard at 5:30?
5:30 with masks on. Not Halloween masks, these.
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying this mask.
That will be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
Mine will be short and sweet tonight. I did attend the Zoom Contract Cities Meeting of November, and I also attended the Angel Tree Lighting Ceremony this last Friday night. Just like the other ladies, I would just like to say Michael, my incredible job. I know that you're working short-staffed, and I think that that was the best Angel Tree Lighting that we have had yet, even coming out of a pandemic, great job. And also to Julian, Julian, your staff was quick, very quick, when I noticed a couple delineators that I thought needed to be put out or whatever. Johnny on the spot, with all of the staff that was involved that night, regardless of what department they were in, we had an amazing event. Lots of people acting safely, a nice gathering for our neighborhood, and that's what makes Longdale great, is that community event, that people can come out and, and enjoy their neighbor. So thank you.
Mr. Protemo.
Oh, thank you. I'm gonna mask off.
You can do it next time.
This is a sidebar? Sidebar? Okay.
I didn't take my mask off.
Okay. I'll take mine off for you. On the 22nd, I believe, Robert, Shirley and I attended Autumn Burke's Turkey Giveaway.
Yes.
On the 23rd of November, I, Shirley and I attended Bradford's.
I forget about that one.
Stephen Bradford's Turkey Give, I don't know what it's called, Turkey Giveaway, that's what I call them. I also attended the Angel Tree. It was fantastic. I know, I talked to Michael already about the new ice company. I think the sled could have used a little more ice, but, you know, he's working on that. Julian, you did a great job, it was nice to see you there. And I just want to say, a young man that I managed in Little Lake passed away recently, and I went to his services, Poncho Gallegos, he lived in Longdale since kindergarten, he's over 40 years old. And I want to thank staff for all the work you guys did when our city manager was here. I think the letter should have been read, with staff and myself, we got this done. It sounded like he was patting himself on the back, this is my opinion, and I think was wrong, I would never have signed that letter. But anyway, that's, I'm getting off my soapbox now and pass it on to you, Robert.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pro Tem. Okay. So I, I too attended the, the Angel Tree Lighting. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Pro Temp. Okay. So I, I too attended the, um, the Angel Tree Lighting Ceremony, um, event, great event. Uh, nice, nice weather. It was a little, uh, warmer this year, it seemed like it was, uh, this year. Um, uh, nice weather. I didn't even have to wear my gloves that I had on reserve. So nice weather, um, a lot of people, uh, I'm, I'm.
Those gloves, I would've had them reserved too.
Yeah, right. Right. The kids were just having a, a lot of fun. I just wanna thank, um, Mike and your staff for, um, putting that together and all the volunteers, and of course Julian, the public works, um, um, staff for, um, for their partnership of putting that together as well. Seemed like everything went smoothly. The only, the only thing that didn't wanna cooperate for some reason was Santa. I'm not talking about Santa that was visiting all the, the kids, but the other Santa by the, by the, by the Christmas tree did not wanna cooperate. He was leaning to the side, he was leaning forward, he was.
I think he was doing this.
He's leaning backwards. At, at one time, there was three public works, you know, um, personnel attending to him. But for some, but for some reason, he just would not cooperate. I don't know. What was the story on, on Santa?
I, I thought it was the real Santa that was there.
No, no, he did fine.
Well, they're both fine.
He did, he, the real Santa did fine. But the, uh, the standing Santa, I don't know what was going on with, with, with him. Um, but nonetheless, um, the kids enjoyed him and the families enjoyed taking a picture with him. Um, I don't know if he knew he was taking a picture, uh, with folks, but, um, a good time was had by all. I mean, I can really tell that the families was having a good time, uh, being out and enjoying themselves, and so I just wanna thank, you know, everyone for putting that together, including those who volunteered on the booths, uh, for, um, putting that together. Um, that, that was a good time. And the ice was, just because you probably slid down the ice and it smashed all the ice, and that's probably what.
That's probably what it is, at first.
That's probably what would've happened. Um, but I wanna thank everyone for, um, putting on that wonderful event. Um, I did attend, um, a, a turkey giveaway drive from the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, invited me to their, um, turkey giveaway, turkey, um, it was a turkey giveaway, I guess, turkey giveaway, and they gave away some other stuff, um, to the folks, um, there. There was actually a couple of Longdale, um, folks there, you know, so that was, uh, I'm pretty good. In addition, I had the opportunity to speak to our, our new supervisor, Supervisor Holly Mitchell, uh, where we spoke, uh, or talked, I should say, about Project Room Key. That was our first time having the, um, the opportunity to speak, um, one-on-one about Project Room Key. Um, as those who may not be familiar with Project Room Key or Project Home Key, um, it's the, the program for which they, they, they were housing, um, temporary housing for homeless individuals, um, throughout the county, and unfortunately, our city, um, had two, um, um, hotels that was host to, um, Project Home Key, uh, uh, Room Key, Project Home Key. And so I had a discussion with the, um, the supervisor to, basically to, to let her know how, you know, our positions, although she's, was fully aware of our positions and that we've, um, think that we've done, you know, you know, our share in terms of having not just one, but two, um, projects in our community when there's other communities that didn't have one, had zero. And so we just wanted to put that on her radar, and she was very receptive, um, to that, you know. We do, did agree to, um, keep each other apprised of, of our homeless, um, issues. I brought it to her attention that we just recently appointed two fabulous council members to, to head up our, our homeless subcommittee, and so she's gonna be interested in, um, seeing how that progresses, um, in addition to just, um, how we respond, um, locally to, uh, any, um, housing issues as it relates to, to the homeless. As you know, um, as everyone know, that most of this is generated, of course, by, um, the county, the state and the county and not by, um, cities. Surely, if you're a, a full-service cities like the city of LA and maybe perhaps Long Beach or what have you, you have social services or what have you that can, um, incorporate, um, homeless services or what have you. That puts cities like Longdale at a disadvantage because we don't have, um, homeless services or housing services, such as, you know, those, those cities that I mentioned or what have you. Uh, people, sometimes people don't realize how cities have different levels of services or what have you, um, but that happens to be the case here in Longdale. We don't have those services, so we have to rely on the county for the most part to provide these services. But we will do all that we can do, of course, on our front. Um, hopefully, we can get some money from the county and from the, um, and from the, from the state. Which brings me to the question that I still haven't been able to get, um, a concrete answer on is Measure H. Um, our allotment, our share of Measure H, which was a proposition that, um, was purported to bring funding opportunities to, um, cities and I guess counties for, um, homeless services. And so the question that still remains to me is, um, what is our allocation? When I say allocation, the reason why it's hard to get the answer is because the money doesn't come to the city of Longdale. But supposedly, LSA on our behalf, um, is allocate tho- those monies or what, what have you, and I'm just interested in to know, um, how much has been raised by Measure H and how much those resources have been dedicated to the city of Longdale. And of course, this is above and beyond what was supposed to be happening from, uh, post, uh, pre, um, Measure H. Um, there's supposed to be a certain, you would think a certain percentage of, um, of activities, um, um, before Measure H and since Measure H passed. How are we doing now in terms of where are those resources and how much is allocated to Longdale? I still haven't been able to get a real concrete, you know, um, answer to that. So maybe when we get a new city manager and now that we got a new, um, um, a new county supervisors, perhaps we'll get closer to answering those questions. But with that, that's all I have. Um, I think that's all the events that I attended. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's it for me. So I'll end my portion, and that will end the mayor's and council, uh, members' response and events. We're almost finished. We have a couple of closed sessions. Matter of fact, we have five closed sessions tonight. We have a lot of closed sessions, sir. And I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us provision on a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You will go into closed session under, uh, all of these are Brown Act sections, Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-two and D-three, one item of anticipated litigation, five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-one, one item of existing litigation. Uh, the title of the litigation is in the agenda, uh, under five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six to confer with your labor negotiator, and under five-four-nine-five-seven-B, uh, regarding public employee appointment, discussing both, uh, an interim city manager and a full-time city manager. Thank you very much, mayor and council.
Okay, with that, we will, um, adjourn to closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As to item nine on the agenda, no reportable action was taken. As to item ten on the agenda, the city council gave direction, uh, for the city to settle on specified terms. That settle agre- settlement agreement will be made public when approved by the court handling that litigation. As to item eleven, no reportable action was taken. As to item twelve, uh, the city council has determined that as of January first, two thousand twenty-two, when, uh, Kevin Chun's time with the city officially has come to an end, uh, currently acting city manager, Raylette Felton, will be appointed, uh, interim city manager as of that date. As to item thirteen, no reportable action was taken. That is my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. The regularly scheduled meeting to be held on December the twentieth, twenty twenty-one and January the third, twenty twenty-two, were canceled by order of the city council on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. City hall will be closed for Martin Luther King Junior holiday on the regular, um, meeting date. Therefore, the next meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six-thirty PM on Tuesday, January the eighteenth, twenty twenty, in these here chambers. It is now nine-twenty-two, and this, nine-twenty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.